Good evening, everyone. It's June the 18th, 2019. The time is 6:30 and we would like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask the city clerk if she would do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Shuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. And now I'd ask the Vice Mayor if he would take us through consideration of changes to the agenda in setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
And the motion has been made and seconded by Counselor Pierce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vice Mayor? Well, I think that's as far as we go, isn't it? Okay. So, we're going to begin with our Proclaimations with the presentation. And I'd ask Chief Stalder if he would come up and do this special presentation for us.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor and Counsel, I think that what I read will best explain it. On 2 May 2019 at approximately 13:34 hours, that's 1:34 in the afternoon, Officer Morrow responded to 1555 Snowy Range Road for the report of a male subject who was refusing to leave and threatened to assault the complainant and stab another employee. Upon arrival, Officer Morrow attempted to contact the suspect, who was noncompliant and would not obey verbal commands. Officer Morrow ended up taking the suspect to the ground and Wallace Okobia and Nicholas Duval immediately assisted Officer Morrow in controlling the suspect until additional officers could arrive on scene. Mr. Okobia had been threatened to be shot by the suspect prior to Officer Morrow's arrival, and the suspect had mimicked that he had a pistol concealed under his shirt. Mr. Okobia recognized the suspect was going to be physical with Officer Morrow and controlled the subject's left hand as he did not want anyone to get hurt. Mr. Duval, an employee of the West Laramie Fly Store, had seen what was occurring and immediately assisted by controlling the suspect's feet so the suspect could not kick Officer Morrow or Mr. Okobia. Mr. Duval later said he was not going to allow a police officer to get hurt if he could help. Further actions on 2 May 2019, Mr. Wallace Okobia and Mr. Nicholas Duval are awarded certificates of merit on behalf of myself and the Laramie Police Department. So, a few months or so ago, I was up here with a life-saving award for citizens that stepped in. There's a lot of unpredictability out on the streets, and in this one here, and I watched the video, Officer Morrow was alone because calls for service had stacked and there was no help. These two guys stepped in and helped him out and prevented this other subject, the suspect, from potentially injuring Officer Morrow or other people in the area. So, it was a pretty dynamic situation. So, with that, I'd like to award this to Nicholas.
The other round.
As usual.
Nicholas.
Lately, it's been rough.
Mr. Okobia could not be here tonight, but we'll get his certificate to him as well.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. You. All right. Thank you so much. This is another great example of the great citizens that we have in our community. Okay. This time, we'd like to begin with a proclamation, and I have asked the Vice Mayor to, Gabriel, to read this proclamation because I felt like he's the example to all of us for somebody that rides bicycles all over the place, cold, rainy, he's on his bicycle. Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. This is a proclamation, whereas millions of Americans engage in cycling because it's a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of physical fitness, and whereas Bike to Work Week helps to increase public awareness for bicycling, educate the community about the benefits of bicycling for transportation purposes, and encourages people to try bicycle commuting, whereas there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation, such as walking and bicycling, in order to reduce pollution, reduce America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of all people. And whereas increasing the number of bicycle lanes, paths, storage facilities, and traffic calming measures will help the city ease automobile traffic congestion and encourage a healthy lifestyle for residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the week of June 23rd through the 29th of 2019 is hereby designated as Bike to Work Week. And the City of Laramie furthermore encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of sharing our streets and highways with cyclists and witness whereof, signed by Mayor Joe Shumway. And I would like to invite Derek Tierney up to say a few words.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you for the proclamation. This coming week is Bike to Work Week. If you do any biking this week, do it next week for Bike to Work Week. You know, Laramie, we're really fortunate here. We have great roads, great connectivity, great pathways, and great access within our community, and our community is actually quite compact, and so bike riding is actually very easy for most people, even if you're not an avid biker or cyclist. And so, what I always like to say is, I think Laramie, over the years, has done a lot of the things that communities really try to achieve elsewhere, but we've done to make cycling easier, and that's evident in the number of people that we see across the community cycling, and some of the things that, how Laramie has been recognized over the years in terms of its cycling ability, its access, everything from bike racks to pathways, all those things lead to allowing users to bike more within our community. And so, I think it should be a testament to the work that's been done over the years that all those little things do add up and make something like biking to work, biking to events in the community, a lot easier, and that should be something that the community should be proud of. So, as I said, Bike to Work Week is next week. There are events through that week. The main event is Bike to Work Day, which is next Wednesday, June 26th. If you want to bike to First Street Plaza, Blue Federal Credit Union, along with Altitude, Iverson Memorial Hospital are putting on like a, kind of like a breakfast and get-together, those coffee bagels, all sorts of things usually there that morning, kind of a place to see other people biking. It's usually a pretty good time to kind of go down there. That starts from, goes from 6:30 to 8:30, and then in that evening, there's the bikes, beers, and brats where you can get food, drink, and enjoy just some time at Depot Park, which is right in that same area as First Street Plaza. That starts at 4:30 and goes to 7 o'clock. And so, if you're a city employee or you want to ride with a bunch of city employees, we meet that Wednesday morning at 7 o'clock at the Washington Park Bandshell, and we ride all together down to the First Street Plaza before work. And so, if you want to join us, or any member of the public is also welcome. And so, with that, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll get this proclamation to you. All right. The next proclamation is, well, let me just start with this. I think it was 1939, there was a movie that came out called The Wizard of Oz. Starts out black and white, and then Dorothy lands in the land of Oz, and it opens the door, all of a sudden, it's in full beautiful color. And in a minute, you're going to see, you know, our version of the aha moment that we had in cinemas when we have the munchkins come up and see this proclamation. Anyway, this is fun. We had people on council try to wrestle this away from me, and I would not do it. Whereas First Interstate Bank, along with multiple community partners throughout Laramie, is hosting Lemonade Day on August 10th, 2019, and whereas Lemonade Day teaches the youth of our community how to start, own, and operate their very own lemonade business, and whereas these young entrepreneurs, along with caring adults, will learn what it takes to be successful in business by using a fun and experiential step-by-step process, and whereas they will learn how to get, set goals, plan for success, find an investor, select a site, advertise, build a stand, purchase supplies, make a product, run their business, do basic accounting, open a bank account, and ultimately give something back to the community. And whereas, because of its collaborative, community-wide focus, Lemonade Day has gained remarkable acceptance with businesses, schools, youth organizations, faith-based communities, neighborhoods, and government entities, and whereas, by all of us working together as a community, we demonstrate to our youth that they are important and we care about their futures. And on August 10th, every citizen has a role. We are either selling lemonade or buying it, and whereas the City of Laramie salutes and commends the participants and organizes this worthwhile endeavor and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding observance. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, acting as Mayor and President of the governing body, the City of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim August 10th, 2019, as Lemonade Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact that a small business has on the youth of our community and successful life lessons it teaches. Now, I want to invite up Gary Negich, Kent Wood, and Jake Anfison, and I expect to have, you know, somebody speak about this, this production that you've prepared us all for. And anyone else that you've... I hope our live stream is in color.
Take a lot of pictures.
It will be now.
Right. You just switch the color.
Switch from black and white to yellow. All right. Here we go.
Good evening, Mayor Shumway and Counsel. My name is Kent Wood. I'm with Gary Negich and Jake Anfison. We work at First Interstate Bank. I became aware of Lemonade Day two years ago from a gentleman in Casper. Casper is the only city in the state of Wyoming that hosts Lemonade Day, and he was extremely excited about it, encouraged me to bring it to Laramie, and we think we've done that in color. Lemonade Day is a nationwide program that was started in 2007 in Houston. Last year, over 1 million children participated in Lemonade Day, and this year, we would like to pilot Lemonade Day in Laramie to see how it goes, and so far, we think it'll go very well. Largely, we've been really impressed with the support we've gotten so far, starting with the City of Laramie. So, thank you for your support of what we're trying to do here. Lemonade Day is a program that teaches children the power of entrepreneurship, plain and simple. We were very selective as to the day we might hold it in Laramie. We figure we've got maybe three days of good weather, so hopefully April 10th will be one of those.
August 10th.
I'm sorry, August 10th.
August 10th will not be.
We have 60 spots available for lemonade stands. We want to have some idea as to how to control this if it gets larger. So, for the first year, we have 60 stands and spots available. This coming Saturday at First Interstate Bank from 9:00 to noon, we will hold registration, and we're looking for kids ages 1st through 5th grade. That's the target audience for Lemonade Day. Just a few things about it, and then I'll let you get on with your meeting. As you mentioned in the proclamation, there's a lot of things involved in a Lemonade Day lemonade business. And once the kids register, they get an entrepreneur workbook, which works them through a business plan for their lemonade stand. There also is a mentor guide for an adult, parents, an adult to help these kids through the process. One of the things we love about Lemonade Day is during the summer in Laramie, it pulls the kids away from the Xbox and the TV and YouTube and puts them together working on a worthwhile project that they can showcase later in the summer. Just an example, that this is not your 1950s lemonade stand. This is the 21st century lemonade stand. So, I'll give you an example of one of these stands that was done by a kid in Indiana last summer. He put together a Star Wars lemonade stand. So, he had this big structure that he tricked out in Star Wars items. He dressed as Darth Vader, and then he had his lemonade, and he had blueberries, and he would squeeze the blueberries, and he would pour the blueberry juice into the lemonade and turn it black. And he charged a measly $5 a glass and got it. So, one of the great things about this project, last year, the national net profit average per stand was $224. That's take-home. And Lemonade Day encourages kids to do three things with their take-home. They encourage them to spend it, save some, and donate some. So, in this workbook, you're asked to pick a nonprofit, a charity, to donate some of your lemonade stand proceeds to. Lemonade Day on August 10th will be an all-day event. It's for the kids to run their lemonade businesses as they wish. They can get up at the crack of dawn and be the first one open. They can also be the first one, or the last one closed in the evening. We'll have prizes for best stand, and then each kid who participates will simply send in a postcard to us that they donated, what they spent, and what they saved. We will put that in a drawing, and one kid in Laramie will win a brand-new bike. Lastly, we ask for community involvement. On Lemonade Day, like the proclamation says, we want you to either sell lemonade that day or buy a lemonade that day. And we will be dressed like this, and we can't wait. Thank you very much.
We can get your books.
We're not going to let you get away because we need to have a picture. Yes. And would you, if you'd come up here, and then I'm going to give the proclamation to whoever... Okay. The proclamation then goes to Kent. If you two would like a copy, we can get copies too, also.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Jake. Thanks, buddy.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Look, socks.
Thanks, Jake. Good job. Way to go, Gary.
Thank you. Good on you.
Looking great.
Hey, how are you?
Thank you very much.
Looks good.
Hey, Gary, who gets to be in front of the bank? You got to pick a kid to be in front of the bank.
I think at $220 a stand, it's my big part-time job.
Okay?
It's not your normal attire.
All right. We have another proclamation, and so I'd like to have Counselor O'Doherty read the next proclamation.
A proclamation in recognition of National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Whereas the American Mosquito Control Association is an international organization dedicated to providing leadership, information, and education leading to the enhancement of public health, quality of life through the suppression of mosquitoes. And whereas the American Mosquito Control Association is dedicated to preserving the public's health and well-being through use of safe, environmentally sound mosquito control programs since 1935. And whereas the City of Laramie, in cooperation with the Albany County Weed and Pest Board, has been involved in mosquito control activities since 1976. And whereas the mosquito control section of Parks and Recreation Department treats approximately 70,000 acres of rural and urban property in a 12-mile radius around Laramie. And whereas the mosquito control program follows an integrated pest management approach that includes control methods by the most economical means with least possible pesticide exposure to people, property, and the environment. And whereas the City of Laramie has approved West Nile Virus Plan to detect and reduce risk of human infection associated with West Nile Virus. And whereas, due to the efforts of the mosquito control program, the quality of outdoor summer activities in Laramie is improved, along with reducing the risk of mosquito-borne illnesses. Now, therefore, I, Aaron O'Doherty, on behalf of Joe Shumway, Mayor of the City of Laramie, do hereby proclaim the week of June 23rd through June 29th, 2019, as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week for the City of Laramie, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing mosquito control services and to recognize the contributions which mosquito control personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed by the Mayor, Joe Shumway, President of City Council.
I think you have a name to present the two.
Oh, and Tyler Shering. Shirley.
Chaveling.
Chaveling.
Chaveling. Okay. Sorry, Tyler.
Tyler, did you want to say something for us?
Sure. Honorable Mayor and City Counsel, first, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank my crew. I have quite a few of them here with me today.
Why don't you have them stand up so we can...
Yeah. Laramie would be a completely different place without these guys and ladies, and their efforts have made a big dent in the season so far. We've faced really challenging weather conditions. And to give you an idea, from last year to this year, I was looking this morning, and our larval control crew, which is doing the, their environmentally friendly bacteria, last year treated a total, or surveyed and treated a total of 650 sites. This year, one month into it, this crew's already at 350 sites. So, they have been doing an amazing job out there. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank them. I can give you guys a little bit of an update of what we have going on so far. We flew a large larval aerial application, June 1st and 2nd, covering about 5,500 acres so far, and then we've also been making treatments on foot, on ATVs. And thus far, we've only made two adult treatments. So, that's kind of back to my point with this crew, is that they're doing a really excellent job with this larval control that we have going on. And then our trap numbers and our surveillance, they, the numbers are on the rise. There's a lot of water with the river. Southwest of town has left its banks in a few spots, so we have a lot more water we're dealing with this year, but our surveillance traps out of town are really heavy, and so far in town, they've been fairly light, but as the weather warms, expect that to change. And then our adult control crew is back there also tonight, and they have equipment prepped and ready and go, and they're waiting for their weather window also, so they're doing a really good job this year. Looking forward, we've had one mosquito pool out of three tested, that tested positive for West Nile Virus. So, our vector mosquito, Culex tarsalis, numbers are still low, so that is a good thing, but I'd just like to remind everyone to make sure they're protecting themselves using deep, draining water as they can, and remember that mosquitoes are most active at dawn and dusk. And then going forward, next week, we have two aerials planned. One of them is the granular larva side, and that is with our increased funding received, I believe, three years ago. We are now able to cover about 3,300 acres with the granular application. As those haymeadows grow taller, we are able to get the BTI still down into the water and have some effectiveness there. And then we're also planning our adult application with the airplane next week, later on in the week, to try and keep those mosquitoes from coming into town. So, yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks.
Did you want to receive the proclamation? Yeah. And by the way, I'll say this. Do you want to get, come on up here and get a picture. While they're coming up, this Laramie City Council named Laramie as a safe harbor for the Wyoming toad. As you can see, we are not a safe harbor for the mosquito, thanks to the great work of this crew.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can you just see how long she gets to stand up? Yeah.
That's what she's going for. It's just a quiet joke for Nancy.
And if I could ask our city clerk to read the notice of the public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on June 18th, 2019, in the City Council Chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following: New restaurant liquor license for tacos, El Halencense LLC, located at 110 East Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of June 19th, 2019, through May 7th, 2020. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the City of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So, this time, if there's anyone that'd like to speak for or against this item on the agenda. Seeing then, we'll close this public hearing. So, we have one more, and I'd ask our city clerk if she'd read the public, notice of the public hearing for the next item.
Notice is hereby given that on the 23rd day of May 2019, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for a new special malt beverage permit, number special dash two. Excuse me, that number is incorrect. Let me find that number really quick. Special dash four.
Previous one was three, so that makes sense.
For Roxy's Catering LLC, doing business as Roxy's Catering. Location of permit at University of Wyoming Arena Auditorium, excluding Mickey's, 1000 East University, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of July 1st, 2019, through May 7th, 2020. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this permit application will be held Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 6:30 in Council Chambers.
Okay. Thank you. And is there anyone that would like to come up and speak for or against this item on Seeing then, we'll close this public hearing. So, we have one more, and I'd ask our city clerk if she'd read the public, notice of the public hearing for the next item.
Notice is hereby given that on the 23rd day of May 2019, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for a new special malt beverage permit, number special dash two. Excuse me, that number is incorrect. Let me find that number really quick. Special dash four.
Previous one was three, so that makes sense.
For Roxy's Catering LLC, doing business as Roxy's Catering. Location of permit at University of Wyoming Arena Auditorium, excluding Mickey's, 1000 East University, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of July 1st, 2019, through May 7th, 2020. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this permit application will be held Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. So, on this new special malt beverage permit, is there anyone that would like to come up?
nineteen, through May seventh, two thousand twenty. Public hearing to hear comments or protests relative to this permit application will be held Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. So on this new special malt beverage permit, is there anyone that would like to come up and speak for or against issuing this permit? Okay, seeing then, we'll close this public hearing also. City Manager, do we have any announcements for today?
Here we do have one announcement from Recreation and Parks.
Mr. Pfeizer.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, just want to remind everybody that this Saturday, from ten to one, at the Laramie Community Recreation Center is our annual Touch a Truck event. It's an attempt for kids to get an up-close and personal view of some of the large trucks and loaders and things that are around. And this year, again, the Airlife helicopter will be making a landing and be there for the kids to see. So, popular event. It's fun for, if I gauge it from three to eight-year-olds, but very popular event. We hope everybody can make it.
Thank you. All right. So, now, give it, go back to the, first of all, before we go to the approval of the consent agenda, is there anyone on the council that has any disclosures regarding any item on the, on the agenda we have before us this evening? Okay, seeing then, I'll go to the Vice Mayor, Gabriel, to complete the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved with one modification, that coming in eight G, section four, the amount to read ten million dollars, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second by Counselor Schuster. So let's have a roll call on the consent agenda approval.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, so the consent agenda has been approved. Now we move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number ten, Counselor Pierce.
Okay, here we go. I move to approve the professional services agreement with the Fourth Economy for the development of an economic development plan and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second by Counselor Schuster.
Honorable Mayor, Council, this professional services contract follows a council goal set for two thousand nineteen to pursue an economic development plan to replace chapter nine of our comprehensive plan. Following that goal adoption, we solicited an RFQ for a firm to help prepare this plan. In doing so, we engaged with the University Economic Development Association to help us identify national consultants who had experience in town and gown engagement, because we felt that that was a very important component to this plan. We also assembled a diverse selection committee, which included Ed Sinikowski, Vice President for Research and Economic Development for the University of Wyoming; Heather Tupper, Regional Director for the Wyoming Business Council; Brady Hammond, Vice President for the Albany County Campus of the Laramie County Community College; Brad Enzie, Director of Laramie Chamber Business Alliance; County Commissioner Terry Jones, and downtown, or Main Street Director Tracy Sherwood. That committee, along with City Manager Jordan and myself, reviewed four proposals and invited two finalists for interviews. From that pool, we selected the Fourth Economy to, or rather invited the Fourth Economy to come to Laramie for a final interview. The team was impressed with the Fourth Economy through the entirety of the process, and the enthusiasm for this consulting firm was pretty unanimous. And what the team liked about the Fourth Economy is that they, first of all, had a lot of experience in town and gown engagement, and were really well acquainted with leveraging on-campus resources and assets for off-campus prosperity. They also employ really dynamic public engagement approaches, which we know from your goals that you wanted to make sure that this was as inclusive of a process as possible. And they're well acquainted with engaging dynamic and diverse community groups to create a common vision and actionable goals. When you embark on a plan like this, I think there's a little bit of anxiety that you might receive a plan that gives you sort of a one-size-fits-all approach to become any town USA. And that's not what our selection committee wanted, and I don't believe that's what you wanted based on your, your goal setting. This team really does look at the authenticity of place and looks at the strengths within a community to leverage and propel economic development. So we're very excited to work with them. Should council execute this professional services agreement, we can expect to see the Fourth Economy team in mid-July, September, October, November, and December, so that we can be set up for a plan that can be enacted in two thousand twenty. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there anyone on council that'd like to have questions for Sarah? Sarah Reese is the Community and City Economic Development Director for the city. Works hard, gets a lot done. I'm sure, I'm sure that's not your proper title, but...
It's a long one. It's, that's close enough.
It's initiatives and all that stuff. Counselor Harrington, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Curious if you've had any progress with the sort of cost-sharing aspect of this that's mentioned in our cover sheet, the, to sort of cover the overage?
We have solicited our selection committee members to date. I don't know if we've had any response.
Mayor, Council, we did have a response from LCBA. However, they haven't concluded their deliberations on that matter, but I was told by Director Enzie they would take that issue up. Just don't think they've made it through the decision-making process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Counselor Stalder.
So we had originally budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, and their rate is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which seems like that was negotiated down from a higher amount. What were the other proposals? What was the finances there? I mean, is this a reasonable amount of money for this type of thing?
I think, I think this probably is a reasonable amount of money, though this was a qualifications-based selection. So their cost proposal was in a sealed envelope. We didn't open that envelope until we were convinced of their qualifications and their suitability to serve us. So with that, I can't tell you what the other proposals look like, but I would imagine they're pretty comparable. I reached out to several communities when trying to find unearth firms, really, that could help us do that. And I really focused on communities that have colleges, and all of them kind of noted the price, a price tag in this very similar ballpark. So we were reluctantly prepared to have something a little bit north of what we had originally anticipated.
Is that everything, Counselor Stalder?
I believe.
Mayor?
Could I, could I just piggyback on what Sarah had said in answer to Counselor Stalder's question? The last you all heard of this was during budget. As you recall, you set this goal in January, you adopted the goal in February, you reviewed the budget in March. At that point, I told you we had, I had recommended, I guess, a hundred thousand as a placeholder. But what I wanted to tack on to Sarah's answer was, if you'll recall, I did also say, geez, we haven't done this in like a decade. So this is a pretty broad guess at this point. So I want to assure you that, from my standpoint at least, the budget that was recommended to you, we were, we were trying to make sure that we had budget adequate to meet your goal and objective, but it was a very rough number even then, and I was frankly pleased that we came in as close as we did to the mark. Candidly, I hope that we could get it cheaper, because you know me, I'm kind of a cheapskate with everybody else's money. But I think in this circumstance, we're going to get what we pay for. This is a ten-year guide for the community, and so, yeah, I wish I could tell you it's cheaper, but I want to assure you, I don't see it as over-budget, because the budgeted number was a pretty rough number, given our lack of history with these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gabriel, and then go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, because the city has been asked to give money to the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, maybe you could differentiate the difference between the money we give to LCBA and this organization?
The money that the city gives to the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance is through what is called a fee-for-service contract, through which we are contracting the Laramie, with the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, to provide a list of economic development services for our community. This firm, though, will serve as consultants who will create an economic development plan and vision for the community. Our relationship with them will be temporary, although I do know that they seem to have long-term relationships with their consultants. In terms of, once this plan is completed, again, in early two thousand twenty, if not the end of two thousand nineteen, our contractual relationship with them is done. What we expect for them to provide is an action-ready plan that really identifies our unique roles and responsibilities, and then, too, our blended roles and responsibilities in achieving economic success in Laramie. And that then will help us to, I think, better define the fee-for-service contracts that we have with our economic development partners, which include, of course, Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, as you noted, Laramie Main Street Alliance, and the Laramie Regional Airport. Does, does that help?
You bet. Just to follow up, so are they all kind of intertwined in discussing and sitting down with this organization on developing this particular plan you're talking about?
Yes. A guiding principle we've been using, or rather, I should say, a mantra we've given to our selection committee, is that this plan needs to be of and for the public. We very much believe that it needs to be a plan that works for all of Laramie, regardless of the constituents, the unique constituents that the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance serve, or the geographic area that the Laramie Main Street Alliance serves. But nevertheless, their voices and their professional opinions and expertise are valuable and integral to the success of this project. So they will be, they will transition from a selection committee role then to a steering committee role, and they will be with us every step of the way.
Thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For anybody on staff that wants to dig into this a little bit, and Vice Mayor touched on it. When we selected, when our team selected this group, were they able to point to some specific examples of plans they had developed with these sort of multiple stakeholder groups to achieve some of the same things that we're aiming to, and that our partners have asked us to try to facilitate a process leading to?
Yes. And in fact, some of the teams that they have worked with are regional alliances. So we, so that involved not maybe thirty stakeholders, but three hundred in a geographic area. We felt that if they could manage those kinds of dynamics, they can certainly manage our local dynamics. But, but yes, they have worked in similarly sized communities, and they've worked in substantially larger communities.
So they've had kind of a range from smaller groups to bigger groups, and they have done what we're asking them to do, which is why they were selected. And I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And the reason I want to ask that question is, you know, this is a, this is a pretty involved process with some pretty, what do we like to call them, thirty thousand-foot level goals? In other words, we have to zoom out and try to look at, you know, the ten-year consequences of this. And it's difficult to balance all those competing concerns between our economic development partners, our existing business partners, our downtown development partners, and of course, the City of Laramie. So to be able to have all those people on that task force, or whatever we're calling it, and then to have a group that can facilitate what can sometimes be competing interests and sometimes are cooperative goals is promising. And then I think what's good about that is the final product is something that everyone has had input on, so that if questions come up in five years about it, we can say, well, if you recall, when we developed this plan, these were our goals. And it sounds like that's the kind of product we're going to get.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. I'll just say this, our goal is to have synergy, to work cooperatively with all of the partners that have been mentioned here tonight. We certainly feel like that this is, you know, our contribution, and we appreciate what Sarah Reese is doing to, you know, work cooperatively with everyone in accomplishing our aggressive goals that we have for developing economically within the city. Is there any other questions, or any from Counselor Pierce? You look like...
No, I don't necessarily have a question. I would just encourage council members, if they haven't done so already, take a look at the publication that was provided by this group. It's pretty impressive. I mean, I, I was extremely impressed on my very quick review of the document, and I hope we have tremendous success. I especially like the town and gown connection, and I think this is something we absolutely have to do. I mean, we asked for it during our retreat and one of our goals, and, and thank you for moving so quickly on this. I personally appreciate that, and I suspect other council members do as well. This is going to be fun, I think. Or at least, I hope it's fun. So...
Parts of it, maybe. And I have to give a nod to Janine, who really got the ball rolling.
Yeah.
I just got it pushed a little farther.
I was so excited to see it, because we didn't talk about this when we did our agenda review. At least I don't recall it on the agenda review. When I, you know, reviewed for tonight, I was like, yes! So it's good.
Counselor O'Doherty.
I was pleased to see when they, I'm in the very beginning, and they listed values, I thought, oh, they studied with the values of Laramie, because curiosity, I thought, was great, and collaboration, creativity, and empathy, and fun. So I think if they really hold to those values, it's a good match for Laramie, because I think that those values describe our community pretty well.
Anyone else? Sarah, was there anyone else that had part of the presentation, or...
No, that's all.
Okay. Then let's go to the, to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make comments, questions regarding this item? Okay, back to the City Council. Is there anyone, comments from the City Council before we go to the vote? Seeing then, let's have a roll call.
McKinney.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. That item passes. Okay, now we go to item number eleven. Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award the professional services agreement to Honeywell International Incorporated to perform an investment-grade audit for a total not to exceed the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second by Counselor Pierce. Bruce Webb.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, this item has been, you've had council goals for the last few years on continuing energy efficiencies in the city and for city facilities. As a reaction to those goals, staff had a work session back in November two thousand eighteen to discuss improving the overall efficiencies of buildings, facilities, and mechanical systems. As mentioned at that work session, the next step is to move into an investment-grade audit. An investment-grade audit is not just changing out light bulbs. It gets a little, a little deeper. It's intended to provide an engineering and economic analysis that we can use in the feasibility of developing and implementing capital improvement projects into the future. We let a request for qualifications in March. Staff recommended that we work with Honeywell, who was also present at the work session back in November. We've worked with... We've worked with Honeywell over the past few months to develop a scope of work. It's task-driven, so we have multiple tasks that we can kind of pick and choose from as, as time allows and as we're working toward certain capital improvement projects. The ultimate purpose is to identify no-cost or low-cost projects going into the future. And when I say that, it's basically projects that will pay for themselves the cost of the project with the energy savings over time to help pay for themselves. Honeywell's actually already been in town doing feasibility analysis on all the buildings. They're doing that at their risk, free of charge to the city, and that's kind of an upfront part of the investment-grade audit, where they gather all the information that they need to put that really complex, deep report together for us. So this is to, to award the professional services agreement to Honeywell to get those investment-grade audit reports completed. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Seen none. Are any questions from the public regarding this professional-grade audit? Counsel, any comments or questions? Vice Mayor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Weaver and I talked after our work session last week a little bit about the study that the HOB School did, and I was just curious, I don't know, you, Paul, you know a little bit more about it than I do, so I was just hoping that we could maybe...
Point of information, Vice Mayor, that staff member from Powder River Basin Resource Council who might have more detail about that than I do, if you want to, if you want to make that part of this discussion. She's got a boot, though.
Go ahead. My question was, certainly she can talk to, but I was just wondering, from city standpoint, maybe you could give your opinion, and then we could hear from the public, on the difference from what the HOB School has done and what this study will do?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Mayor, Councilmember Gabriel, what the HOB School has done, working with us over the last three, four months, is really look at what the carbon footprint is, if you will, the emissions footprint is for city or municipal operations. So our services, and driving trucks around, and taking care of streets, and keeping the lights on in public meetings, and those sorts of things. We have that data, and Darren Parkin, our natural resource manager, is in contact with the HOB School. We were hoping to bring them in in August to present their findings to you. How does that, so to the second part of the question, how does that touch upon this issue? Well, you know, I mean, indirectly, it touches upon this issue in the respect that if we use, you know, if we're more efficient in our use of energy, whether it's heating or cooling or electricity in our buildings, then presumably we lower that, that footprint in the world as far as municipal operations go. I will say, though, that this is an independent effort, and it really wasn't tied to what the HOB School did, and it is an effort that is not new to us. We've been engaging in energy efficiency activities for at least a decade. Our last really significant energy efficiency audit and project slate was done probably seven years ago, and once you establish the project slate, then it takes a number of years to complete those projects. A lot of these projects deal with our mechanical operations, so we're talking like the mechanical operations of the water treatment plant, or the wastewater treatment plant, and ways to make those more efficient and effective. So I hope I answered your question.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to come to the public in just a second. We're anxious to hear from you, by the way. Anyone else on the council with any questions before we go to the public? Welcome, come on up and...
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name's Monica Leininger. I work with an organization, Powder River Basin Resource Council. I've lived in Laramie for a really long time, coming up on, boy, seven years as an adult and much more as a child, so I love this community. I've been working with a group of citizens for actually a couple of months now, and prior to the last election, I think I'd talked to several of you on the council about a citizen interest to make a commitment to carbon neutrality in the future. And we're very excited about that, but we wanted to provide the council and the public with research-driven data that helps us find out if this is feasible for our city. So we partnered with the HOB School to push the students to do an insane amount of work in one semester in creating a calculator that would measure the baseline emissions of every department, and then we could use that calculator in every year following to track those emissions, just kind of get an idea of where we're at right now. The city has actually hired one of those students to finish and tailor-fit the calculator throughout the summer, and I believe she'll be presenting to you on August first. So that's certainly an exciting endeavor, and we also have been working a little bit with economic analysis and seeing what it would take for Laramie to offset its energy needs with renewable energy. And anytime, I'm happy to give a farther presentation and provide more data there. But I see this Honeywell endeavor is really important. I do worry that, I hope, I wonder if we could do some of this ourselves, but I think what they are able to do is just provide a really in-depth analysis to increase the energy efficiency of our buildings, and that is not our ultimate, the organization I work with, that's not our ultimate goal, that's not skills or expertise that we are able to have, but I see it just as another building block towards where, from my perspective, and what I can hopefully show to you is the perspective across the community that we want to see Laramie go in this direction. So I'm excited to hear more, and I hope we can continue the conversation on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And be sure to sign there that you, for the record, so we have a record of your comments.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak regarding this? Energy audit, efficiency and the energy audit? Yes. Marian Griffin, would you come forward?
Hello?
Welcome.
Marian Griffin? And I signed in out there. There's a deal taped to your desk, and I hadn't thought about this particularly. I wondered if you could repeat the amount of money you're going to spend on this?
Two eighty?
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Plus nine, seven, one, I think?
Two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Two thousand, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine seventy-one. Contingency on that, too?
There's no contingency.
That is not to exceed.
Okay. That was my main question, but I was wondering, which buildings are you going to assess for this? Just things owned by the government? The audit on the...
That, I think you're close there. Bruce, do you want to come up? I think that's what we're focusing on, but there may be, it may go beyond that. Bruce, Marian, Bruce is going to give an answer to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, Council, I can address that. The scope of work is broken out into six tasks. The first task is for general fund facilities and buildings. Those buildings and facilities include City Hall, City Hall Annex, Fire Station One, Ice Arena, the Rec Center, Animal Shelter, Parks Shop, Mosquito Shop, Fire Station Three, and the Police Station. That's just Task One. Task Two is the wastewater treatment system. Task Three is the water treatment and distribution system. Task Four is specific to water meters. Task Five is to look at smart system, smart city technology, and Task Six is for renewable energy projects which could touch really anywhere in the city. So that general fund, Task One, really covers the bulk of the buildings.
You've got wastewater and the water treatment. Does that include the one out west of town?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Brooks.
Yep.
Does that include the Monmouth Ranch?
Mayor, through you, in respect of the last task that Brooks mentioned, the renewable energy opportunities, that could touch the ranch, but we don't know until we're done doing their analysis.
Okay. Did you avail yourselves, I guess I have a question?
Okay.
Did you avail yourselves of the one that went through here, Rocky Mountain Power, and they sent someone around that would update your, like, beauty shops and stuff in there? And it was really nominal for the person that needed it done. I happen to know of one that only had to pay a hundred and sixty dollars, and their shop looks like new with the new kind of lighting they put in. So I wonder if you've used any of that in the past, in the recent past, like this year, earlier this year?
City manager probably bring us up to speed on that, but I can tell you this, this isn't our first venture into making cost savings, conservation, things like that. The Wyoming Association of Municipalities has been involved in helping us with those goals. Also, there's been other groups which have been mentioned. Perhaps the city manager could bring us any other areas that we have used that hasn't been mentioned?
Mayor, Council, the first energy-grade audit we did with Long Technologies a number of years ago, we did extensive lighting upgrades. Assistant City Manager and I were just comparing notes that most recently, we used the Rocky Mountain Power program to make further updates to our lighting systems and whatnot, so...
I guess my question would be, see if they could do more for you?
Sure. Yeah.
Before you sign a contract or whatever. That's just my suggestion to save money, because they did a splendid job on the ones that I've seen. I wished I had been in on it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public who would like to make public comment on this item? Seen none there. Let's go back to the council. Any other comments or any other questions? Counselor Stalter?
How much money are we looking at spending with Honeywell? Sorry, this is comment, and I asked a question.
That's okay. Question's fine.
Mayor and Council, it's noted in the contract, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine seventy-one.
No, I don't mean on the audits.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like, just in general, on their, their products and, you know, things like that. Like, how much, if they're doing an energy audit, presumably they're going to sell us some stuff. How much money are we planning on spending?
Mayor, Councilmember Stalter, it really isn't specific to Honeywell. They're just a vendor who's doing the energy audit. They'll come back and they'll give us an analysis, and it should have a payback. And if it doesn't have a payback, we're not really going to do it. So you're kind of, they're going to come and give us analysis on things that they're going to say here are things that are energy efficiencies. Some of this may also be in the budget. There's things that, projects that are probably already energy efficiencies that they're going to look at and tell us to do it a better way. So it's not selling products. It's doing upgrades and efficiencies and things, like, say, at the wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at new blowers and things like that that we actually need to replace right now, so it's part in the budget, but we're having, they're, they're looking at that.
But Honeywell sells that stuff, right?
But that, that's not the per, they don't sell everything, no, I don't think they, I mean, they have some things like security systems and things like that.
But they're just doing the audit.
Yeah, they're just, yeah.
Brooks, I'll have the, the city manager go first, and then we'll go to you, Brooks. Go ahead.
We may have glossed over sort of how the process typically looks, so if I could, let me describe that. This would be what's considered typically in, in this kind of a, an audit, really the first step. They're going to come in, and they're going to conduct the audit, and as Malia had said, they're going to come back to us with really a return on investment analysis and a slate of projects. And so for each project, they're going to come forward and say, for, you know, here's an example of a project we did years ago with Long Technologies. If you replace the blower, you know, we see a need, we've evaluated and audited, and we see there's a potential to update the blowers in your wastewater treatment plant. That will generate this much in energy savings over this period of time. It'll cost you this much upfront. Here's your payback period for your upfront costs, and here is the return that you would receive in energy savings by making those modifications. So they're going to, so this is a first step. The next step is, they are going to have a whole bunch of really interesting projects and data for us to sift through. We are not obliged to execute any projects. We would come to you with a recommendation to execute projects that make business sense. That's the position that staff would take. So our standard approach is, we'll come back and we'll say, these are the projects that pay off in terms of energy savings over time, and recommend for those as good business, right? Regardless of what your position on the environment is, or global warming, or anything else, they're just good business. And then we would also bring to you the slate of projects that maybe don't have such a competitive business period payoff, and those are the, the projects that, in my opinion, are within the purview of council, the public as policymakers and really visionaries in the community. You could choose a project that may not pay off for fifty years, but you may feel it's the right thing to do. So, so this is really a first step, it's going to gather a lot of cool data and analysis for us.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that in this contract, we have it so that we have to bid the projects, there are bidded projects, there is engineering. Honeywell said if you want us to be the engineer or the person on the project, they gave a price list of what their price would be, but we have the option on each task to go out and bid. Honeywell really doesn't have to be involved. So we made that as part of our contract. I just wanted to say that.
Mr. Webb, did you have, are you okay?
Just ask one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Follow-up question, comment, sorry. So if we were going to buy a new blower, for example, whoever sells that piece of equipment, they wouldn't give us this information also, like, hey, here's this fancy new blower, and this would be your expected payoff? I mean, it's just, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah. You know, in my experience, and Brooks may want to touch on this as well, but no. I mean, those are vendors and, and their mechanics, and they're not engaged in this element of sort of assessing, you know, energy cost over time. They're always going to sell you their product. What this group does that I think is valuable to us, I certainly see your point, Counselor Stalter, but what this group does that's valuable to us is they have broad experience across the industry and a whole bunch of different arenas, you know, water treatment, wastewater treatment, distribution, transmission, those things. And so they bring a certain expertise to the table that simply we don't have, and we, how would I put this, their information is semi-impartial as well. A vendor might bring us information, but they're trying to sell a product. They're salesmen. These folks are not salesmen. They're going out working on our behalf and on the public's behalf to bring us information about a variety of projects that hopefully is objective and isn't marketing materials that a vendor might bring us. Is that kind of answering your question? Did I get there? And they bring an expertise, again, that we just don't have on staff. Maybe a bigger city might, but we don't. Frankly, I don't even know any big cities that have this level of expertise on staff, to be candid with you, but I just may not know, so...
Is that everything?
Thank you.
Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, on the same topic, before we get to something else on it, for the city manager or Mr. Weaver, anybody else, Honeywell, and I appreciate that explanation of what, of what the purpose here is. Now, they are in the business of selling some of these products.
Mayor and Councilmember Weaver, they are. Notably, I think HVAC-type equipments Honeywell's sort of known for, and so there are. But as, as Malia said, we will bring that slate of projects to you all, we'll make recommendations, you may choose some that we didn't choose, and then we bid those out, just like we would any other major public improvement.
And this is going to be...
They could bid, they could bid.
Sure.
As a vendor, right.
They could bid, and there, and there would be competition for those bids, and is it also, and I know these are difficult questions, but is it also reasonable to say that there's going to be a percentage of the products that might be involved in whatever upgrades that might be suggested that Honeywell may not manufacture, or there are a number of competitive manufacturers for those products? Is that, is that fair to say?
Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, I believe that's absolutely fair to say.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Pierce?
So I understand the concern about the, the price. I think it is, it is like, it seems to be a lot for what we might get at the end of the day, but the reality of it is, what we get at the end of the day will pay for the cost of this, so I think we need to keep that in mind. At least I believe we go through all this, we go through these savings opportunities, and, and when we save X amount of dollars, we take that two hundred and eighty thousand right off the top, and we just, we just keep going from there, and we will see many savings, I suspect, over time, so...
Mr. Webb?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, if I could, maybe just a point of clarification, the, the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is the maximum price that we would pay. If you look at the, the budget breakdown on the back, the fiscal portion of it, all those buildings I listed in the general fund, the investment-grade audit report for all those buildings is twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. The wastewater for the treatment system is a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. The, the processes out there at the wastewater treatment plant are... The processes out there at the wastewater treatment plant are millions and millions of dollars in mechanical systems out there. It's probably the largest power drain that the, or energy usage that the city has. So that's the highest cost out of all the tasks is the wastewater. As far as the water, the water system, treatment and distribution centers, forty-five thousand five hundred. The water fund, the meter portion of it is fifty-two thousand five hundred. And then twenty thousand for the renewable energy assessment and twenty thousand for the smart, smart city technology assessment. So, and those, we broke those tasks out pretty much by fund. These would be phased over a few years. It wouldn't be something we would just throw it all at them at one time. We purposely did the tasks so that we could phase this over years with projects that we know are coming, the capital projects. With the report, when they come back and they give us suggestions, let's say, if they say, if you change out this HVAC unit, you're going to save this much money. It's going to pay for itself in five years. Great, we're going to go out to bid. Honeywell, like they said, Honeywell can bid, so can anybody else. There's no guarantee that that's going to be necessarily Honeywell project or product. We're using Honeywell to do the assessment, not necessarily install or purchase the equipment from them. I hope that helps.
Okay, Counselor Schuster, let me, let me do this. I'm not sure we left the public and I know Mrs. Griffin has another comment. Do you want, Marion, do you want to come up and do another comment? And then we're going to come back to the council.
Marion M. Griffin, Laramie, and thank you for the second chance. Because I don't have any hostility toward anyone when I'm speaking of cost. The questions I have of the council concerning this arrangement, I'd like to know if you ever consider, when you're hiring engineers, with any expertise in any of these fields that you try? Because if I had the choice of, you know, hiring engineers, I'd be looking for certain expertise. And I think it would save the city a lot of money and probably a lot of money because they don't just need to sit in the office twenty-four hours a day or eight hours a day. So I just point that out and no malice toward anyone. I'm trying to think of ways to save money because I have always lived in Laramie in the highest taxation for homes in Laramie. They're hiring here in Alta Vista and I'm just on Corfale. And the reason that I ask, I, I wonder if you've ever done a study on West Laramie, for instance, to get the sewer water. I wonder if you have, do you ever go like to Rocky Mountain Power, for instance, who provides all our power right now? Most of it, I should say, maybe ninety percent. You know, they send out in every bill I have, and I have some commercial stuff and have had a lot of it in the past. And every few months, they send you out a complete rundown of what they'll do. The people that came in that I spoke of, like at the beauty shop changing, they bring in experts from California and took them exactly an hour and a half to change out a whole beauty shop. And her bill is probably cut in half. And I shan't mention names because I don't do that. But I just want you to think about what you can save. You know, saving is more important than spending in a lot of ways, especially now because I don't think we can count on much from the state in the future. I think the capital building just about emptied the coffers. So I just point that out to you. Think about that, when you hire an engineer, do they have any expertise? Why don't they spend time on that instead of building stumbling blocks for people that want to build and so on? Months and months and months. And I only know that because I've been constructing myself about forty years since I sold out. I did sell out this year, but I'm still interested for the sake of the city. I'm interested in West Laramie. When I was on the council in nineteen seventy-three, I tried to get them. It would have cost a thousand dollars per unit for every house in West Laramie to have. And we had four million dollars, by the way, that was, we didn't owe anything. Woody Haynes was in charge of the budget. But they had a chance for a thousand dollars per unit, think of that. They would have hooked up water and sewer to each and every house in West Laramie. And I tried my best to get it done. I thought I was crazy, but I don't think I was. I hope you don't either. But I'd like to see something done in the future since I had, I had West Laramie and when I decided to do something with my acreage out there right on the edge of town, they had me tear out a brand-new sewer line. And I know that they didn't put in as big as I had put in. And I went down the alley and they went down the street. So I just point that out that I think, you know, if you think about it, there's a bunch of you that are pretty smart on that. I know, you know, a lot of your business people. And I just wish you'd start considering that because you're going to run out of money one of these days. And studying is, I wonder how many rooms we got in this building that you've got studies started and never been read? I could point back to my time on the council, thank you.
Thank you, Marion. All right, anyone else on the council have any comments? Counselor Schuster.
Excuse me, I was on the board liaison to the airport and when they converted all their runway lights to LEDs, I asked them at that time, are you just going to replace them? And they go out and they said, no, the cost saving on the energy, if we'll do it now and we replace them all, we'll start saving thousands of dollars of electricity every year. And the payback was only two years. So I understand what we're saying here. If we can find some good energy savings, the paybacks will be worth everything we're doing. But as Janine said, we're going to have to look at, as our city manager said, we're going to have to look at each one and say, what is the payback ratio on it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, comments, final thoughts? It's a roll call.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalter.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Okay, with that, the item number eleven passes seven-two. We'll now go on to item number twelve. And that is Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is the Award of Professional Services Agreement for the B-2 and Bill Nye Sanitary Sewer Design. I move to award the Professional Services Agreement for the design of the B-2 and Bill Nye Sanitary Sewer to Sunrise Engineering of Cheyenne, Wyoming in a total amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred dollars plus contingency of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty for a total amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Mr. Japp.
You know, well, mayor, members of council, this is really two projects that we've combined into one for design. This was done because both sewer systems need to be coordinated together for design and combining them will simplify the coordination and also speed up the design process. They will be constructed separately. One will be as a YDOT city project and then one is just a city project. The first one, which will be the YDOT city project, will be Bill Nye, Boulder to Nineteenth. This will be a new sewer line. Many of you will remember that we actually already have entered into an agreement with YDOT back in May to provide the design to YDOT to incorporate into their, so we'll provide the sewer design to incorporate into their street design for that. The second one will be Spring Creek. That will be from Corfale to Ninth Street. This is an existing line that we have. This also will, we have an MOU agreement with, when the high school that was put in, that we entered into with Albany County School District to fix this line. We have some issues that are occurring with it with size and things and that's part of the MOU agreement. Also part of the design, we'll be connecting the Bill Nye, Bill Nye line, sewer line to the Spring Creek line and the consultant will figure out how to design that together. With that, staff does recommend an award to Sunrise Engineering and I can answer any questions you do have on the project.
Thank you, questions? Mr. Japp, any questions from the audience, from the public? Mr. Griffin?
The question I have, Marion Griffin, excuse me, Laramie, respected, thank you. And Rachel Garts too, that Bill Nye thing. Has that litigation been finished? I heard there was some, and I, you know, I'm not involved in construction anymore, so I don't care except I look at costs over runs. I know what it costs to hire an attorney.
Marion, there are several areas on Bill Nye that are still being under consideration, so I'm not sure everything has been settled, but we're working on that.
And I guess as, thinking of all of our local contractors, I guess I would like to see you forecast ahead so that they wouldn't bid something out of town that they could bid in town if they knew it was imminent. I think that would help your prices a lot. I just speak from forty-year experience. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, I believe we have a five percent.
In-state.
Preference for in-state or local contractors, is that correct?
Mayor, council, you're correct. There is a preference established by state statute for in-state contractors.
All right. Anyone else from the public with any comments regarding this item? Any comments from the city council? Roll call.
McKinney.
No.
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalter.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
So that item passes with an eight-to-one vote. Next item is item number thirteen, Counselor McKinney.
City council approved the application for the restaurant liquor license number R six three taco L. L N C, LLC, D V A taco L. L N C.
Helencianse.
Helencianse, sorry, apologies. One ten Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming for the licensing term June nineteenth, twenty nineteen through May seventh, twenty twenty and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second by Counselor O'Doherty. Yes.
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you, we had received an application on May twenty-first. Here with us is Jennifer. She is one of our applicants tonight. They have taken up the building that previously.
El Conquistador.
Yeah, was El Conquistador two businesses ago. She opened the doors on Thursday for sales of, you know, just regular, the food sales. So today she's before you requesting a restaurant liquor license. With a restaurant liquor license, it does require that she sells sixty percent in food sales and that she have a dispensing room. The dispensing room that was previously used is also the current dispensing room that she is using. We have submitted the application to the liquor division for review and all of the requests that we have had have all been met. They do have tips-trained staff and plan to continue tips-training in the future. With that, Jennifer's here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as myself.
Thank you. Any questions for city clerk or for Jennifer? Regarding this license? That's good, seeing that. Anyone from the public that has any questions regarding this license? And the process of getting to where we are. Okay, one last chance, the council, any comments before we vote?
Good luck.
Yep, always.
I've heard you're doing a great job, so good luck to you. Roll call.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalter.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
All right, so that new restaurant liquor license has passed. Congratulations. Look forward to, long relationship with you. Item number fourteen, Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, mayor. This is a new special malt beverage permit for Cowboy State Brewing LLC. I would move that council approve the application for special malt beverage permit number special dash five, Cowboy State Brewing LLC, doing business as Cowboy State Brewing. Location of permit, University of Wyoming War Memorial Stadium, excluding Wildcatter and Beer Garden, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of July first, twenty nineteen, through May seventh, twenty twenty. Authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. City clerk, Ralph Oliver.
Thank you, mayor. On May twenty-third, in the city clerk's office, we received an application from Cowboy State Brewing for a special malt beverage permit to be effective in War Memorial Stadium, excluding the Wildcatter and Beer Gardens. Included in our packet tonight was their agreement with the university to allow them to hold a special malt beverage permit to serve malt beverages in this location. We've tried to include a little bit of information as far as the revenue that the city will have. It is a prorated license since we are in the middle of a license term. But we also tried to give you a comparison of what they paid approximately in special event permits last year for the alcohol catering permits versus what they would pay this year. Part of the big difference in costs are late fees as well as the change in legislative change that occurred starting July first of this year. So we've, we tried to give a little projection of what this year's permits would cost to give you an idea of the difference there. When we do process an alcohol catering permit, we do have several departments that review that. I tried to list that out for you. We have the city clerk's office, fire prevention, police department, risk management, and the city manager's designee. So it's reviewed by several staff members for each alcohol catering permit. You know, I should have put the total number of permits for this last year, but I want to say it was a hundred and four permits total between the stadium and the arena auditorium. So just to kind of put that in perspective a little bit, with the special malt beverage permit, it does also allow them to do the beer hocking that they started doing last year without getting additional permits on top of that. They are excluding the Wildcatter to be able to do other events and also be able to continue the service of wine up in the Wildcatter. Beer Gardens had been excluded in their agreement last year and so they went ahead and excluded that and they'll pull alcohol catering permits for that location as well. So we will see alcohol catering permits from Altitudes as we have in the past and then Beer Garden location alcohol catering permits from Roxy. Roxy's on Grand. So with that, Roxy is here and available for questions as well as Bill Sparks from the university. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay, are there any questions for either Ms. Sinsley or Mr. Sparks or the city clerk? Counselor McKinney.
Is this the only application for, that's going to be allowed in stadium again this year? Once this application is approved? Will anybody else be able to come in and get? Will anybody else be able to come in and get in and buy and serve alcohol, too, besides her?
Yeah, let's go back to the clerk. Just, could you just review about the Beer Garden?
Sure. Councilor McKinney through you, Mayor. When a special malt beverage permit is issued for an area, it is for the licensing year that we've, that they've asked for. So July 1st through May 7th of next year. That does exclude any other permits or licenses from being issued on top in that same area. So that's why we've, they've asked to exclude the Wildcatter. That's one of their main, you know, areas that are rented out within the stadium.
Mr. McKinney, or Councilor McKinney?
Thank you, Your Honor. So is there another independent company that does the Wildcatter Club?
The games, the game permits are usually pulled by Altitude.
Right. Who does Beer Garden?
The Beer Garden is generally Roxy on Grand. Roxy's on Grand.
So she pulls, has two different companies that pulls the different permits to be able to need in a location, except for Wildcatter Club? But, so she's exclusive to those areas?
Yeah, so she would be allowed to serve in the whole stadium minus the Wildcatter. She could serve in the Beer Gardens with applying for an alcohol catering permit to serve on that day in that location. Otherwise, service will not be allowed in that area.
But can anybody else pull a permit for that, too, still?
Since this special malt beverage permit does not include it, yeah, they could.
Does that answer your questions? Mr. Sparks is the one that really controls this at the university. Do you want to clarify or make any other comments?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. In answer to, in answer to that specific question, Roxy does have exclusivity within the, for the purpose of serving beer and wine in the stadium and the arena. And that was determined through an RFP process that we did. This will be the third year, but three years ago, that we went through the RFP process, asked other vendors in, in this area in town and so forth to bid on that. Went through that process. Roxy's was awarded the bid, so there is an exclusivity aspect to it as a result of that bidding process that we went through.
Councilor McKinney.
Thank you, Your Honor. When you say the bidding process, she was the cheapest?
Not necessarily the cheapest. The one that met the parameters, the majority of the parameters that was put forth in, in the bid, including being able to obtain the proper amount of manpower, TIPS-trained manpower, those kind of things, to be able to actually perform the services that were required. And to, we have a pretty stringent process with regard to checking IDs, risk banding, controlling the amount of beer that each person can have in a particular game. There's, they're controlled to four maximum beers that they can have during the span of a game. And we have all those kind of things. We required that the people who put proposals together in the RFP process put forth how they would be able to manage and control that. And Roxy's had the best plan and has been able to, and since that time, to come up with the proper amount of manpower and TIPS-trained manpower and so forth that we need in order to be able to put, put on this service during the football game.
One more call.
Go ahead, Councilor McKinney.
How many applications did you have?
As I do any from memory, we had four, I think. Four different vendors put proposals forth. And we went, as we said, we had a selection committee and so forth that reviewed those and determined who had the best, the best proposals. Wasn't necessarily based on pricing, because it's basically constructed. Pricing is sort of an unknown. We have a split where Roxy provides the service, we pay for certain things, they pay for certain things. And then when we sell the beer product, we get a certain percentage, the university does, and Roxy gets a certain percentage. So it's the amount, there really wasn't an amount put forward other than the agreement to the percentages that we put into the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions, anybody has?
Mayor and Council, if I may address tonight. And excuse my attire, I just came, I just recently returned from abroad, and I'm in my running clothes, so I'm trying to catch up. A little tired here. To, you know, give you a little bit of background, I believe I did this last year, but to refresh your memories. You know, all, besides providing the staff, we provide insurance. It's, it's quite a high bar. We have to follow regulations through the Wyoming Liquor Commission. We work with the university, we work with the police department. We employ over 150 people. So, and we try to employ people, students, you know, part-time people in the community, so it's a benefit to them as well. We train them with the Wyoming Liquor Commission. It's quite a process. It's quite lengthy, and going through these, these new LLCs due to how we had to do that per the legalities of the Wyoming liquor laws and the ordinance, it was, it was quite a process. And we worked with the city, we worked with the University of Wyoming as well, again, with the Wyoming Liquor Commission. And we think we've come up with a pretty decent resolution by coming forward, implying for these permits.
All right, thank you. All right, any, anything else in the council? Any questions, comments? Thank you, Roxy. And then now to the public, Ms. Marion Griffin, if you'd come forward, please. Welcome. Go ahead.
Roxy's husband, Bill Henley, worked for me years and years ago with one of the cowboys, an old cowboy. And he was excellent. I still think they're excellent, and I got acquainted a little with Roxy. And I think they run tight ship.
All right, thank you. And Bill Junior Garrett, Jr., keeps the tradition going, so thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any other comments or from the council? Roll call.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
Harrington.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two no's, Your Honor.
Okay, with the seven-two vote, that item passes. Now we move on to the next item, which is item number 16, Councilor O'Doherty. Are we on 16 or 15? Item 15, Councilor Stalder.
I move that the city approve the application for a special malt beverage permit number special four to Roxy's Catering LLC, doing business as Roxy's Catering, location of permit at University of Wyoming Arena Auditorium, excluding Mickey's, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of July 1st, 2019, through May 7th, 2020, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster. City Clerk, Bartholomew.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This application was also received on May 23rd in the office of the city clerk. We have reviewed it for its completeness and also sent it to the liquor division to be reviewed. They have met our municipal needs, as well as state. This permit would give them the ability to serve beer and malt beverages within the arena auditorium. They have excluded Mickey's, so that they could rent that area for specific events and still be able to serve wine. With that, at each game, a permit will need to be applied for, whether it's a malt beverage permit or an alcohol catering permit. They do kind of vary back and forth on those a little bit. But with that, again, we have the same applicant and Bill Sparks here as well to answer questions, so we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, are there questions regarding this permit? From anyone on council? All right, anything from the public? Back to the council, any comments? Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two no's, Your Honor.
Okay, that item with the seven-two vote passes. Now we go to item number 16, Councilor O'Doherty.
I move the council change on first reading, original ordinance number 1999, amending chapter six of the Laramie Municipal Code by revising sections and 6.06.040, comma, 6.16.015, and 6.36.020, clarifying language concerning keeping livestock in the city limits, post-conviction penalties for vicious dog convictions, and procedures for reports of animal bites.
Second.
As specified.
An item that has been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce, I believe, right? Okay, so Chief Stalder.
Mayor and Council, it's not as complicated as the numbers might be, can't believe. There's basically three sections. The reason it deals with more sections than that is that it's just the way the ordinance is structured. The first change that we're requesting to Title VI is, is to make the same requirements for juvenile animals, seven months or under, as without, but do not have a mother present, to have the same acreage requirements as adult animals, which is the quarter acre per livestock unit. Problem that we're running into is that people are keeping pigs and goats that are juveniles without a mother, and they don't have that livestock or that acreage that they're necessary. So the change is, is really simple to, to just make it so juvenile animals with, without a mother have to adhere to that quarter acre per livestock unit, just as if they were adult animals. Mothers that are present with the juvenile animals, they can still have six pigs or six goats there if they have a mother with them. So the change is really just to clarify that acreage requirement for juvenile animals without a mother. The second change having to do with people who want to keep a vicious animal. So if somebody is, is found guilty of having a vicious animal, but they still want to keep that animal, currently in the ordinance, there are a number of requirements and conditions that must be met in order for them to keep possession of that animal and not have to have it euthanized. Those conditions have been there all along. The problem is, is that the court, the municipal court judge can't take any recommendation from the prosecutor on how long those conditions must be in place. So we just went back in and put what currently exists in municipal court for probationary period as the period that the judge can demand that that person keep those conditions in place, whether that condition is fencing, chaining, oversight, the different things that already exist in the ordinance. This just gives us the ability to, when they're found guilty of having that vicious animal, if they want to maintain possession of it, it gives the judge the ability to take a recommendation from the prosecutor to say, you've got to keep these conditions in place for six months, not six days or six weeks or anything like that. So that's the only change on the second piece. The third piece, really, the problem that we're having is that we have some, it's important when we have an animal bite that is reported to a healthcare facility to immediately notify animal control of that bite. We have some healthcare facilities in town who are not following that best advice, but they are adhering to Wyoming State Statute and reporting the bite to the State Department of Health, but not locally. The State Department of Health then sometimes delays in getting the information back to animal control, which extends the period of time that that person who was bit may have to go through a rabies series, or it delays the time that we can go out and find that animal potentially, get it quarantined appropriately. We just, as an example, we just had an incident where the bite was reported to the Department of Health. We did not get the information back for 10 days. So we, at that point, that's the quarantine period for the animal on a bite. We were outside of that. This person may very well have either contracted rabies, which sends it around, or been put at risk for rabies, or we could have had an animal running around that had rabies that we didn't know about because we didn't have the report. So all this last piece does is requires healthcare facilities, hospitals, urgent care, all of those different places, private physicians, to immediately report the animal bite to animal control if somebody comes in and reports a bite. So those, those are three fairly simple changes to Title VI. And I would take questions if you have them. And I have animal control staff here who knows lots more than me.
Councilor O'Doherty.
So do you, do you think the person bitten doesn't know that it wasn't reported to the city? Like, they know it's reported to the Department of Health, but they aren't aware that it's not coming to the city, that information?
Mayor and Councilor O'Doherty, usually the people don't know those regulations. That's why we added as the last piece of that, that we would follow the guidelines set by the, by the state and national governing bodies for rabies controls. So sometimes those can shift on us, we'll follow those best practices. So the person who's bit probably doesn't know that it's not getting reported.
Any other questions from Council, Councilor Pierce?
So this has to do with the hoobed animals, I guess. So my question, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So if I lived in the city and I had a quarter of an acre, I could have a goat or a pig or one animal per quarter acre that was an adult, right?
Correct.
And if they had kids for goats and the appropriate names for all the other animals, they could still have all the kids in the case of goats if the mom was that one animal that I had on my quarter acre, right? But if somebody said for a 4-H project that, or not even a 4-H project, but say, for example, the mom dies and, and sometimes a mother goat could nurse two or obviously more, or if I wanted to take a spare twin or, or an extra, I couldn't, I couldn't do that? Is that what's being said? I guess what I'm trying to say is I couldn't take in two baby goats without a mom on a quarter of an acre. Is that what's being said?
I can let CSO Lang confirm it, but, but the point is, as long as those juveniles no longer have a mother, you still have to have a quarter acre per unit.
So I, so even if the baby goats, I'm nursing, you know, with milk, buying goat milk or whatever, I could not I could not have two baby goats on the quarter acre without a mom?
Up until the time they're seven months old, if they don't have the mom, then you have to have a quarter acre per goat.
But I could have them until they were seven months. So I could have three random orphaned baby goats without a mom on a quarter acre until they were seven months old?
No. No. As soon as they don't have a mom, they have to have a quarter acre.
Chief, could you just clarify this? When you talk about a unit, usually it's cow, calf.
Correct.
If it's a pig, it could be a sow with six piglets. And that would be one unit, right, for a quarter acre?
It would be one unit until the mom is no longer present or that the piglets become seven months old.
Okay, and then they have to...
They all have to have their own quarter acre.
Right, okay. Go ahead, Councilor Pierce.
So just to be clear, if I had a quarter acre within the city limits, I could not adopt three orphaned baby goats. I could only adopt one.
Correct.
No matter if it's two months old or eight months old.
Once it becomes eight months old, it has to have its own quarter acre.
But even if I wanted to adopt three baby goats at three months old, I couldn't do it?
Not if they no longer need a mother.
But you could bottle-feed a baby goat and the mother doesn't have to be there.
Not according to the ordinance.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm Dean Lang with the Laramie Animals Center, community service officer. So I'm going to go back a little bit just to kind of get everybody some history. Historically, prior to our previous ordinance change, if you had a quarter of an acre of land, you could have an unlimited number of livestock animals. There was no amount that... So in a residential household, you could have four dogs and cats in combination. But if you have a quarter acre of land, you could have 20 cows on it, with no limitations. So what the limitations put on their one animal per quarter acre was considered a reasonable number of livestock animals within the city limits if you have that amount of space that you can designate to that livestock animal. When that revision was done, we allowed for the baby to be with the mother because if they're born, that's a process that's going to happen. The loophole that was fixed in the correction here was the way it was verbed before is if that... If you had any animal below seven months, livestock, you didn't have to have a quarter of an acre of land. It could be anywhere in town, quarter acre or not, and you could have an unlimited number of those animals. So any resident currently in Laramie decides they want to get 15 baby goats, they could have them up to seven months. So the correction here is to make that so that you still... Any livestock animal has to have a minimum of a quarter acre. And the units is defined as an adult, an adult with offspring up to seven months of age, or offspring by themselves up to seven months of age or up to an adult. Does that answer the question? So if you have a mother goat that has two babies and she passed and you only had a quarter of an acre, that would be a potential problem in regards to that. Enforcement-wise, if that was brought up as an officer, I mean, we're going to look at that a little bit differently than somebody that brings in five baby goats to their quarter acre or less to raise for whatever purposes.
Okay, so I think this is poorly written, if I could just say that. I mean, because if I had a quarter acre and I wanted to take in two orphaned baby goats, for example, I should be able to do that, a quarter acre. Not necessarily... I mean, as it stands now, if we pass this, no, I won't be able to do that.
That's correct.
See, that's not good. This is not good. I wish you didn't, I wish we didn't group these all together, all these three topics, because I am supportive of the other two. But if I had a quarter acre, even if I lived in town and I wanted to adopt two orphaned baby goats, I think I should be able to. I mean, they're just little baby goats.
Mayor and Councilor Pierce, the reason that I brought them all together is to deal with this in one session. You certainly have the luxury of breaking out or amending or doing whatever you want to one or any of the three pieces. But since they were all on Title Six, I felt it was prudent instead of bringing the first one for three readings and then three readings on the next one and three readings on the other one, to allow you to look at this similarly to what occurred back in 2010 when we get a huge revision to Title Six. So you're certainly at leisure to shift that language or anything else.
Can I just give... I mean, I understand like 30 baby goats, that's a big deal. But two or three, that's not that big of a deal.
You're welcome to make an amendment.
I think I will. Just let me get there.
While you're doing that, I kind of think nine's a good number for little baby goats.
Okay.
Point of order, this is the first reading, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
While we're waiting, anyone else? We'll come back to you, Councilor Pierce, but Councilor Weaver.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the post-conviction penalties for vicious... It says vicious dog, I guess vicious animal. So prior to this proposed change, the city attorney's office hasn't been able to do anything except say, you have to follow these standards indefinitely? Is that the situation? Or we've said, well, we have no time limit, so we don't really have a way of following through with that? Is that closer to the problem?
That's correct. And so the reason that we use the six-month period that they have to adhere to the conditions is simply because that's the limit... If they were put on probation, which this really isn't probation...
Dog probation.
That's the most probation that the judge can issue for somebody for, say, a DUI conviction.
Okay.
So they could do two months, they could do four months, they can do up to six months that they must adhere to those conditions if they want to keep that animal.
All right.
City Attorney.
Yeah, on this point, Council, I think that this amendment is fair to both the citizen and to the city because we don't want that uncertainty and we want that dog monitored and taken care of under certain conditions with insurance and where they're kept. It shouldn't go on forever for the citizen. There's this monitoring period. But for the city, we do want to make sure that this can take place for up to six months. I think it's fair for both sides.
I appreciate that from the city attorney and the chief. And chief, I just didn't understand if we were just saying to folks, well, you must always do this. And really, we haven't been able to do much because we didn't have a specified timeframe for these folks. So if there was another dog bite and you went out there, there was really nothing else to go on. Is there... One last question on this issue. If this happens more than once with somebody's animal right now, and, you know, we have record of it and there's been two dog bites and they've been reported and everything, is there a limit on the number of incidences for an animal by state statute or city ordinance that says, well, I'm sorry, but we've got to take your dog. It's bit two people, three people, whatever?
If there's repeat offenses, we have the option of going through circuit, which has some stiffer fines.
Okay.
Or there's other capabilities within Title Six. We can actually force the euthanization of that animal at a certain point.
Yeah, I was just curious about that. So it kicks up into a statute thing. Yeah, that's too bad. People feel really passionate about their dogs and there are some dogs that are biters, so I was just curious. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Weaver.
Can I respond as quickly? Actually, in the city ordinance, the way it's currently written, the post-conviction things that have to be met are for a first and second conviction. If they're convicted a third time, the judge actually at that point doesn't have discretion to imply those things. At that point, the animal does have to be surrendered and euthanized. So basically, in city ordinance, we do kind of have, I guess, three-strike, where it's first offense, you're convicted, you meet these conditions. Second offense, you still have those conditions. Obviously, any time the judge can order stronger penalties as far as euthanasia of the dog. But it is written in city ordinance currently that at a third conviction, then these conditions are taken away. And at that point, the dog or animal would have to be surrendered.
And I appreciate that. Unfortunately, it generates another question for me. You guys didn't figure out my questions about the animal ordinance. I apologize. So when we cite somebody for something, for this kind of thing, when we talk about a bite, do we have our staff people, are they taking things into consideration like, well, did it break the skin? What were the circumstances, that kind of stuff? I assume, you know, well, this guy was breaking my house and yeah, my pit bull bit him. That's probably not, that's probably not what we're talking about. You were on the property, you know, that's probably not what we're talking about. How about a dachshund? Gee, I wonder why I'd ask about that? That nips somebody and they do it three times. And that person just doesn't like me or they don't like wiener dogs and they call you guys.
So it has to be three convictions. So three things have to hap... Basically, three things have to happen there.
Yep.
When the call is generated, there's an investigation made.
Yep.
During that investigation process, there has to be determined whether there's probable cause that the bite was unprovoked and it meets the vicious ordinance. So basically, that would answer the, someone breaking into your house or your dog offending you.
I figured that much.
So if it meets the conditions for vicious dog, the citation's issued, then it also has to be the conviction. So they would have to be convicted in court of vicious dog, owning and keeping a vicious dog.
Which is where the citizen... Pardon me, that's where they have the opportunity to...
They're going for the judge and the judge can determine whether there's guilt or not. If there is guilt, then these conditions are met. So it's not three bites, you're done. It's three convictions of owning and keeping a vicious dog or animal. It's not actually three bites because bites happen all the time, provoked and unprovoked, but that doesn't necessarily mean a citation or a conviction is going to happen.
Mr. Mayor, through you, thank you. And I was at a order there for one of those and I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And thank you, guys, because, you know, sometimes when we have these revisions, we're not always familiar with what it actually states in there. You know, so we're changing things, but what about the background of what we're doing? I think I have a pretty clear picture on this and I appreciate that from you folks.
All right. Councilor Pierce, are you ready?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I have another question, though.
Go ahead, let's do it.
So with the putting together livestock, emus, and ostriches, which is at the 6.06.040, why do we put birds with mammals, basically? I mean, I don't mean to be funny, but one nurses and needs milk and the other is an egg. I mean, right?
Go ahead, I'll attempt to answer that. Ostriches...
I mean, they need room.
There are distinct difference between those and parakeets in household, inside caged pets. So your ostriches and emus are not going to be a house pet. In the definition of livestock, it was to define the animals that are traditionally kept as food or fur or, I don't have the definition right in front of me, but not necessarily as pets. So an ostrich or an emu is not going to be kept traditionally in a household. It's going to be a livestock-type animal, even though it's not a cow or a pig, which are different.
Size.
But in terms of that quarter acre, right? I mean, emus and ostriches, they're big, right? So they need space. And you don't, they're not little 15-pound baby goats. It's a whole different thing.
Baby goats can grow up.
And there are two of them.
Councilor Pierce, I think we know why Noah lived in the county.
This is crazy that a person with a quarter acre can't have two baby goats. I mean...
When you make that amendment, we'll have a discussion. But let me know when you're ready. Anyone else have any questions? Any other comments about anything on these three items on this 1999? That's probably when the ordinance was first written, was 1999. Councilor McKinney.
I just want one clarifying question.
Okay.
But the part of the quarter acre, right now it reads, you can have multiple... We're changing it to singular on a quarter acre, as long as seven months or older or an adult.
The... I'm sorry, try us again. The modification we're making now is actually...
I just want the number. Where are we going from to, if we pass it? That's what I'm looking for.
The attempt is to change the verbiage. Currently, animals, livestock units, or defined as units currently, livestock animals under seven months of age fit into a little loophole where they don't require a quarter of an acre and there is no number limit to allow those small animals. So currently...
How many is it as adults, it's still?
Currently, as an adult, you can have an animal over... A livestock animal over seven months of age, you can have one per quarter acre. That's the current ordinance.
We're trying to get the babies down.
We're taking the babies to make sure they apply to that quarter acre also and that they can apply somehow towards a number so you don't have an unlimited number of babies per quarter acre or on smaller lots than a quarter acre.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And Councilor Pierce, if you don't feel like you're ready, we can... This is the first reading. We can, you know, get that language prepared and then have it ready for the second reading, too.
That would be great.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
And work with our city attorney on that? Yes.
Maybe Animal Control.
Okay, and he'll work with Animal Control and all that. All right, are we good?
Good.
All right, let's go to the audience. Is there... Marion, your hand's up. We need to move the podium closer.
Sit a little closer.
Good extension, correct.
And the people live here. Marion Griffin, Laramie. I have a question. If I combine two lots and have a quarter acre, I'm speaking of my grandson and I have a great-granddaughter that dying to have a little horse. And I see in the paper that there's one been rescued, it's a miniature. And I, having had lots of horses and raised with horses, know a little about them. They're not mean. I'd rather clean up after horses. You know, I want to think of, that's the cleanest you can find. We had goats, too. Lots of them. But I am concerned about... Because I'm going to will that property to Paul. He's going to get that property. Whole family knows it. When I, you know, do my last thing. And I just would like to know another thing. Why in the world, when you're putting in notifications, why can't you notify the police department directly? Is that against the law somewhere?
Sure, I understand.
City Attorney.
They shouldn't have to chase around for notification.
Mayor, when I asked that question myself of the non-reporting entity, they cited HIPAA, the law that has eaten all other laws. I think that they were wrong about that, but they need yet another law to allow them to violate HIPAA. So we tried.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. It's overseen what you're going to do about what you want to do with animals. But I'd like to know about the two lots. Do I need to give it to him now?
Marion, I think your question may be just as simple as counting up the total...
I know how many square feet between the two.
And then you can figure out how many animals you can...
Forty-four thousand plus is an acre and I've probably got pretty close to 20-some-hundred acres.
Three, five, sixty is an acre. Ten thousand, eight, nine...
Because his house is next to mine where I built one for my mother and one for me. I live in the mother's house now.
Okay.
And I just would like to clarify because I'm going to get a little horse if I can.
All right.
I've had one and they're the most lovable little animals in the world, the miniature horse. I bought one at the first horse sale out here. And let's see if I have anything else. But he can't be notified directly. Can they be notified indirectly? And when they call Animal Control, can't they notify him and just call him?
I'm not sure I understand. What, what...
Wouldn't shouldn't be, that shouldn't...
Are you talking about?
About notifying when they have a vicious animal.
Okay. Yeah, the, what we're doing is, Marion, what we're doing here is that, right now, the reporting is going to the Board of Health and to the state, but not to the city. We're saying, "Do that, but also report immediately to the city." Once we have that ordinance, then that's a requirement of, you know, the healthcare providers to immediately report to the city so the Animal Control can start the quarantine and start...
I wanted to clarify that, but doesn't just make sense, you know?
Yeah, and that's what we're, that's what our...
Please try to do their best.
That's what the ordinance is moving towards, is having that done very quickly.
But can, I just wondered, can they do a directive?
Sure.
For the Board of Health, some of the, by the police department, when they get that call?
City Attorney?
Mayor, I think that what we're trying to craft here is the most direct way to get that reporting directly from the healthcare provider to our Animal Control immediately.
Well, I, I should think it'd be pretty important. You know, I can remember clear back to a little boy named Britain, and when they first started settling over in southwest Laramie, and there was a pack of dogs that attacked that little boy, about five years old, and just nearly shredded his ears, his face. So, I'm, I'm thinking back to that, you know, pretty important. Ruined his life, I know.
Too bad. Anyone else from the public? Anything else to the council? Any comments or any other? Council Schuster?
It was on Facebook about a month ago of a dog bite in Washington Park. And the bit, the problem is, the people were in a little bit of shock and didn't do what I considered the right thing. They grabbed the person, they took him to an urgent care type place and there, and never called the police. If the police had been called, then it would, all the information would have went so much faster. But a lot of times, people are just in shock and go do what I consider is the incorrect thing. I'm not going to call it the wrong thing, because they got the person first aid. But you, you need to involve all the agencies you need to involve. If somebody gets bit, whether the dog is prosecuted or not, there, there needs to be a report, because that takes it to where it's not going to be ten days later, it's going to be two hours later, where things are going to be quarantined and checked. That's, that's the bad thing, is, is the wrong thing happened in the wrong order and it's, it's because it wasn't reported.
Anyone else? There is canine rabies. There's not been a case, I believe, in the last twenty-five years west of the Mississippi, so that's a little, you know, a little hope. But then we don't want to get that, we want to be very cautious and very careful that, you know, there is rabies, uh, other than canine in, in, in this area. Bats and skunks and things like that. But we have to be very cautious to make sure that we protect, you know, anyone that's bitten so that they can quarantine the animal and determine very quickly whether or not they need to do the, the treatment for the, for the rabies. All right, let's, I think we're about ready to go to roll call. Ready? Roll call on this item.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Somway?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Okay, for the first reading, this passed eight to one, and we'll move on to the second reading, which I'm sure we'll have amendments in the second reading. Now, we move on to the next item, which is Council Harrington, item seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Council approved Resolution 2019-54, appointing Vice Mayor Pat Gabriel to replace myself as the Council Liaison position on the Albany County Tourism Board, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's, but the motion's been made and seconded by Council Schuster. Any discussion? Go ahead, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We thought, given the circumstances, that we would just bring this forward to you for a formal, just reappointment of the Council Liaison.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, this came up briefly. I think Counselor Pierce might have brought this up. I think the practice has been, if it's a matter of scheduling or timing, sometimes an informal process of exchanging committee appointments has taken place. I think we've all participated, well, many of us have participated in that from time to time. I think in this case, the reason why we're going through the formalized process is Counselor Harrington is asking us to acknowledge that he said he's not comfortable with that position. It's not an issue of scheduling or convenience. It's an issue of saying he feels that he needs to recuse himself from service on that board and we need to kind of acknowledge that, yep, thank you for letting us know. We, we agree with your assessment and are formally reappointing another member, in this case, the Vice Mayor. And I think that, that's the difference and, and that's why it's not the usual, "Well, why don't we just trade?" Because there, there's something that Counselor Harrington, I think, we should acknowledge him for doing that and thank him for doing that. There's, there's a little bit more of a circumstance besides personal convenience there, and I think that's why we're following this process. So, I do appreciate it, Counselor Harrington and Vice Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will say that there is a business relationship that is not a conflict, but is perceived in Counselor Harrington saying it's not comfortable, and so that's the right thing to do. And so, you know, that discussion was made between the Vice Mayor and Counselor Harrington, and so this is what's before us to vote on this. And obviously, I'm sure, you know, I've talked to Counselor Harrington. He enjoyed the relationship he had working with the Tourism Board. Great board to work with, but it's one where we want to make sure that we, you know, always do the right thing when we're working in our position as council members with, with the different groups that we work with. Okay, any other discussion regarding this change in appointments? Okay, let's go to the public. Any questions that the public has or any comments regarding this? One more chance for the council. Roll call.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Somway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero no's, Your Honor.
Okay, that item passes. Now, we go to item number eighteen, which is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comments? Ms. Griffin?
Marion Griffin, Laramie. I do have one that's different too. I've been notified not to rehash anything. I won't. Lapeau Park, I have lived on that hill up on Corthell Hill. I have lived there since nineteen sixty-two, I think, up on Park Street. I bought my first house up there. And I have looked at Lapeau Park in all its disarray, right in front of my houses. That's what, sixty-some year, almost seventy years. May eight-five in August. So, I know what it looks like. And that tree was cut down, that one that's been sawed off, it was cut down the first year it was put up. I tried to get more trees planted and that one was planted. And here's what we raise. We're plagued with wasps across the street. You know why? Because they only go, according to them, they only go where animals, you know, they can, the smell of animals is what they go after. A crow won't eat them. They're dangerous. It's cost me a lot of money to fight them. I put it in a new yard when I came back. But I'm inclined to just let myself go because it looks like the devil across the street. They mowed everything for that frisbee thing. And I think that's clutching at, I don't know, that park would be more beautiful. I'm surprised Greaser hadn't said something. He's developing a beautiful area. And I, I just wonder why you don't insist that they mow the whole thing there. And if they can't come up, the better idea, not take, take the ruling away to have the frisbee park there, because that's a, a very iffy thing. Not many people participate, even with the thing they had this past weekend. They don't consider anybody's rights as far as parking. And I think I'd like to see I have a right to look at that mow like the rest of the town somewhere after fifty, sixty years. And we've always been in the highest bracket for property tax in case. You'd never looked into that particular item. Time-consuming, you can't look at all of them. So, I don't know if anybody going to do anything about it, but I think it's high time. He had the mowers there, had two of them mowing for hours. I raised on a ranch at Steamboat and the ranch at Steamboat, my dad would have kicked me all over, he was a Marine, if it, if I'd have been that slow in mowing. Two power units. And I can prove, thank you very much for the time, but please do something about that ugly thing. And the second thing is, please help West Laramie, because I don't want to rent the property anywhere so it doesn't affect me. And I don't know, maybe you want to see red dirt piled up in mine, because all I create is weeds and wasps. It cost me a lot of money to get rid of them. And the wasps is, hurts so much, worse than a hornet, that there's not much comparison. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Anyone else from the public like to make public comment? All right, um, let's go to item number nineteen, consideration of future council work session topics.
Mayor, I would like to add one.
Yes, Council Harrington.
Sorry to the rest of the council for adding one to our long list, but I do think it would be prudent for us to have a conversation regarding affordable housing in Laramie. So, I think that would be a worthwhile work session. Hopefully, you all agree.
I support that.
Okay, there's the, do you move that to the future council work sessions and affordable housing? Anyone else have any other council topics, work sessions?
Oh, I was wondering if we could have a discussion about options, maybe hear from the public about the plastic bag issue. I mean, it didn't take very long for the cross from Walmart to be covered with bags again. So, maybe we could have a discussion just to see options that, that the public would like to see.
Okay.
I'd also support that.
So, plastic bags, uh, discussion, you said discussion, looking for options to...
Yeah, I guess I'd like to do this.
Reduce the number of, of the...
Of them running the litter. Right, yeah.
The litter.
Which, Mr. Mayor, in support of this, you know, with the city has invested money on these mobile fences when we had a problem with that not all that long ago with a neighbor...
Yep. It's a Wyoming bird, right?
That's right, unfortunately.
Council Pierce?
So, on that same topic, not too long ago, there was a really good article in the Boomerang regarding what Jackson was, was doing related to plastic bags in the community. I would be interested in, you know, having them either come to us via web conferencing or just to have a conversation with, with the folks in Jackson when, when we get that far in the process.
It could be part of our discussion during the work session.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I don't necessarily think they need to travel. I think we can just do some zooming or web conferencing and we could, we could talk to them. Right.
Yes, good.
As Jay, our guy out there, he does butts in.
Any other topics? All the way forward? All right, I think we're ready for item number twenty.
Let's see, I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding litigation Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, A Roman numeral three, and confidential information, Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, A Roman numeral nine.
Second.
Okay, so we're moving in second to adjourn. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, one opposed. So, we adjourn, we are adjourned to executive session. All right, let's...